All right, good evening and welcome. My name is Scott Ashton, I'm CEO of the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce. Very pleased to have you all here this evening. I want to say a special thanks to our venue host, Oceanside High School Performing Arts Center. What a beautiful place, how about a round of applause? I think we're very fortunate to have a venue like this in our community. I'd also like to acknowledge the host for tonight's event, Oceanside Chamber of Commerce, and its Business and Community Political Action Committee. The members of our backpack in attendance this evening are Marva Bledsoe, who will be taking all the questions, Rick Wright and Debbie Allen, who are timekeepers, and David Neidiger will be our moderator this evening. We've organized our candidates' forums and constructed our questions for our events with the understanding that we have an obligation, for an educational obligation to the voters of our community. We understand that there are a wide variety of perspectives represented here tonight, and it's our expectation that every candidate, every audience member, and every person in the room will be treated with dignity and respect. So this is the last opportunity, if you have a question on an index card that you have not turned in, please do that right now. And at this time, we'll get started, I'd like to introduce our moderator, David Neidiger, who is almost a lifetime resident of Oceanside. He moved here when he was eight months old, and that was a few years ago, and he served as the Chamber CEO from 1997 to 2016, as my predecessor, so pleased to introduce David Neidiger.
Thank you. I'm going to be bouncing up and down between the podium and the table because of the accident that occurred a long time ago with my knee, this still bothers me a lot. Anyway, welcome everybody, you know, if they had something like this, almost makes me want to go back to high school again. This is such a fabulous place, I'm really, really pleased. We're here, basically to, my job is to keep everybody on track, make sure that the fairness for all the candidates and the questions are all asked and answered properly. District One is interesting now that we're going into the district, District One covers basically the old part of Oceanside, when I was a boy, everything kind of occurred down in District One, there wasn't nothing at the El Camino Real, Oceanside Boulevard didn't exist when I was a kid, it's called Short Street, those of you that might remember that. But now, Oceanside Boulevard is the southern border of District One, of course the ocean, the basic hampton, and extends back as far in some areas as college. If you really want to look and see exactly where you are, whether you can vote in this district or not, the city has a great website that has everything outlined there, so you can check that all out. We're going to be asking questions to help us determine who will be the representative of District One on the Oceanside City Council. Some of the rules of engagement, candidates' questions were prepared by the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce Committee, and will also be soliciting quick questions from the audience. Each of you of the candidates will have one minute to answer the question. We'll start the questions with you, Susan, and then we'll go right down the row, for the first question everyone answering the same question, and then the next question and the round robin will be, start with Chuck, and then Mike, and then Esther, all the way down. Our timekeepers are Debbie Allen and Rick Wright, as was identified, and you'll have one minute to answer each question, and when there's 15 seconds left, you will see that, which is a little hard to see, but it is a yellow card, and that allows you 15 seconds left, and when you hear a bell, that means that you're almost done, when you hear...
You're happy?
You're toast. We ask everybody to stay with good manners, decorum, no interrupting, no shouting from the audience, no hooting and hollering, and the person that brought in the case of rotten tomatoes in the back, please remove it and get it out of here, because we don't want anything thrown at anybody, including me. And also, reminder, please turn off all your cellphones, okay? We're going to begin with round one, I'm going to go sit down, if this is okay with you guys. We'll start with you, Susan. The housing crisis across our nation, in our state, and in our own community is a topic of frequent discussion. Our workers have difficulty finding housing they can afford, so they can leave the area creating a drain on business. How will you address the issues of workforce housing? Please be specific.
Well, thank you for that question. I have been a Realtor for 15 years, so I am familiar with the housing and the way the prices have screamed up. I think that there's not a whole lot the city can do about the cost of land and building materials, but it would be beneficial to streamline the building permit process and the cost of permits. I believe that if we can bring more units into the city, it will help with stabilize the price of housing. Right now, we have a severe housing shortage and inventory is quite low, which contributes to multiple offers and quite a overpricing of homes.
Chuck, if anyone would like me to read the question, then I will, but otherwise, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Housing and homelessness are interconnected. We have a lot of market rate housing in Oceanside and the surrounding area, but we in Oceanside have to deal with hundreds of homeless people who live here. Almost all of our housing is starting at around $500,000. In the entire time I've been on the city council, I have worked with developers to see about, they pay an in-lug fee instead of building affordable housing, and I've asked them to build affordable housing, and no one's ever done that before, even though we have had affordable housing units built. When a developer pays an in-lug fee, nothing happens with that money until we stack it up into becoming millions of dollars. Starting with the Villastoria project, the developer builds the housing on-site or nearby, and makes it so that people can move in immediately, and we have people who have formerly been living in their cars, now living in homes, and they're very pleased with that.
Thank you, and thank you everybody for coming today. This is my debut, really, with my neighbors, and I appreciate this opportunity to share my manao, as we say in Hawaiian, with you, my thoughts. Beginning in 1991, housing has been an issue for decades, and in some ways, you can say it's sort of a developer's ploy to get us to do what they want us to do. But we also live in an area that is possibly overbuilt already. We are talking about cutting our water ration to one-third of what our present allowance is, but anyway, back in 1991, I walked 100 miles between Pasadena and Tijuana with Habitat for Humanity to bring this issue up, and we've decided to get into affordable housing by providing it. We, for the last 24 years, have provided affordable housing here in Oceanside, and we are now Oceanside's first green apartment community. We'd like to help others get there.
Esther?
Thank you. Actually, this is basically a dual question or problem, because while we definitely need more affordable housing, more workforce housing, we also have the lowest jobs-to-housing ratio, and this is very, very difficult. We have the lowest in the whole county. So while we definitely need more workforce housing, and the way to do that, I believe, is to go back and revisit the Oceanside Boulevard vision plan, which basically we had a partner that ended up leaving, and so we weren't able to go forward to the next step. We need to do that, we need to do, basically it's infill housing, close to services, close to transportation, and that is how we're going to get there. So we're talking about Coast Highway, we're talking about, you know, Long Coast Highway, we're talking about Oceanside Boulevard, and also, but at the same time, we really definitely need to build those jobs by bringing more businesses to Oceanside. Thank you.
In my inevitable style, I made a mistake, it's like the first one I've ever made in my life, but I forgot the first question I was supposed to ask you all, so now Chuck, you're going to have to start with the first question I was supposed to ask everybody, and that was, yes, the one-minute introduction, the elevator speech, yourself tell us why you're seeking to represent the city council, and we're going to start with you, Chuck.
Thank you. My name's Chuck Lowry, I'm a native of Oceanside, I've lived here practically my whole life, I'm on the same street that I grew up on, so I really know the neighborhood well, and it's really important to me as an individual community member, that I listen to the needs of everybody who lives in town, not just the people who live in my street or in my neighborhood. As being, now that we're going into districts, all the council members will still vote on all the items that we voted for in the past. So my style of representation is to look at an issue, listen to what the issue is by either people who bring it forward to us as residents, or people with projects that they want to do, evaluate what the information is, make a decision on that information, rather than just coming in emotionally, which I see many of my peers doing that, they just come in with their opinions, they've got some kind of political agenda, that might not be the right fit for the entire community, but I think that by listening to what people have to say, and researching what it really means, that we can move Oceanside forward like we've been doing. Thank you.
John Locke said that, "When your government begins to steal from you, it's time to change it." And I have to say unfortunately, that that's what's motivating me to get involved. We're having issues with corruption, we're having issues with neighborhoods stealing from other neighborhoods, okay? And the city needs to keep the vision that it had in 1992 with parks' accessibility. We also need, instead of alienating our neighborhoods, we need to start helping our neighborhoods to organize themselves, so that their visions can be realized, and their investments for their grandchildren can be preserved.
Thank you. Esther?
Thank you. My name is Esther Sanchez, I'm running for reelection to the Oceanside City Council. Actually, this is the first run for District One. Our family has been in District One since the 1930s, I have a BA in urban planning, a law degree, I was a deputy public defender for 20 years, who did a lot of work in terms of mediation, and I feel that I have done a really great job for Oceanside, there's still so much to do, but one of the first things that I did was get the community together over the beach resort project. As you recall, our city was divided, it was something that we really needed to do for the downtown to jumpstart the development, the redevelopment of Oceanside. So I got the community together, and we agreed to let the timeshare go forward. Also, hand in hand, we needed to make sure that public safety, the crime rate was down lower. So I worked with the city manager, we got our police department, our police officers higher salaries, we ended up having community policing, and this is something I'm very, very proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Hi, my name is Susan Custer. I have been in Oceanside for over 36 years. As you can probably tell, I grew up in Virginia, in the south, and I want to assure you of one thing, that even if you have trouble understanding me, I have no trouble understanding you. So I'll be listening to your needs and wants. Anyway, I've been very involved in the community since I moved here 36 years ago. I've been in Quanis Club of Oceanside for 10 years, president for the last three. I've been involved with the Old Mission Monastery School, the Women's Resource Center, and the American Cancer Society Relay for Life. I'm running because I love the city, I saw what it was 36 years ago when we had a lot of problems, it's come a long way, and I want to do everything I can to help ensure that it continues the progress that it's made.
Thank you, guys. This will be our second question, and I'll be asking that of you, Mike, okay? And I really like this question, I think it's a really good one. When they diverge, opinions, thoughts, processes, when they diverge, how will you make decisions that balance the needs of the city at large with the demands of the folks in your district and the people who elected you?
The first thing I'm going to do is I'm going to find out who's not willing to sacrifice. When those who aren't willing to sacrifice identify themselves, then the rest of us will solve the problem. It's a crime to balance our budget on the illness of the poor. I won't allow it to happen.
Esther?
Thank you. The question has to do with balancing the interests of the city, perhaps even against one neighborhood or another, and I feel that I have been a real people person, I have gone out and visited communities and worked with communities, and pretty much did a lot of outreach. I feel that our communities, our neighborhoods, really feel very strongly about Oceanside, and the goodness of Oceanside, and what's best for Oceanside, so I believe that when we do have whatever conflict there is, it is coming together and really doing what's in the best interest of Oceanside. So for example, there's a housing project, and there's, you know, perhaps it could be tweeted, or maybe it can't, so it is what is in the best interest of Oceanside and the neighborhoods, and in keeping with the quality, quality of life of our city. So bottom line is, I think that that's what I've been able to do over these years, is to have a really great relationship with our communities, with people, and, you know, that's why they always vote me in so much. Thank you.
I think that, as with most cities, the downtown district of cities produces most of the tax revenue, so we need to maintain and encourage that growth, because that money benefits not only District One, where most of it will take place, but the entire city at large. So I do believe that whatever happens in District One will expand and improve the whole city, if we maintain our focus, and we have to maintain our focus on the whole city, because as was previously stated, we'll be voting for the city at large, not just our district, so it's very important that we focus on that.
Chuck?
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, when we have issues in the city of Oceanside, and I'm the elected representative, I go out and check it out and see what the issues really are. Yesterday, I was visiting people in one of our remote senior neighborhoods, remote from here, it's at the other end of the district, and several people told me that they couldn't get across the busy street that comes out of their neighborhood when schools let out, so I went over there and looked at it with one of the residents, and he pointed that out to me, then he took me over and showed me the hillsides that are completely covered with weeds, and they showed, he showed me that the surface of the streets were very uneven in their neighborhood, and he also showed me where the apartment buildings were, where they had many families living, and I realized that this neighborhood needs more attention, but just because there's something going on there, doesn't mean that we can do anything about it right away, but I'm taking back those comments that he gave to me to the city staff, and ask them, I will ask them if they can address some of these concerns. As I said earlier, this is the end of my first term, at the end of a four-year term, and my opponent still has two years remaining on the seat.
Okay, now we're on to question two, or three, I'm sorry. Measure Y, and this will be for you, Esther, you'll start with this one. Measure Y, also known as SOAR, which is saving Oceanside's agricultural resources, which appears on the November ballot, has created a great deal of controversy and division in our community. Do you support or oppose Measure Y, and what's wrong with the other side's opinion?
Well, I think that controversy actually started before that, when staff recommended to the council that we not go forward, because this would mean a change in zoning, where there is no water, no sewer, no services at all, no roads, no infrastructure at all, and staff recommended against going forward, and unfortunately, the council decided on a three to one to move forward. So I think that that's what the controversy happened, I think that is actually why, I mean, I can't put myself in the shoes of the folks who began doing SOAR, and getting up over 13,000 signatures, but pretty much this project was the controversy that caused people to go out and get those signatures, so I believe that SOAR is in fact a direct result of the controversy that was actually created at the dais. I believe that what the citizens of Oceanside want is to be able to decide which projects should go forward, you know, when there is a change in zoning, where we have no services, and it'll certainly impact the residents in terms of water, in terms of taxes. Thank you.
Your question was that you want to know if we oppose or support question Measure Y, and I oppose Measure Y, because first of all, it's stated that it will protect open spaces and parks, however, we already have a city ordinance that does protect those. For a park to be rezoned to some other use, it has to already go before a vote of the city at large, so there's no need to duplicate that. I think that it will infringe on the private property rights of the homeowners out in the South Morro Hills. It treats that area of the city differently as far as zoning goes. Currently, the entire city, to change zoning, that goes before the city council, and we need to continue, treat the entire city the same way, so zoning out in Morro Hills is going to be changed, it should be decided by the city council as well as the rest of the city. Thank you.
So the SOAR initiative came about because some wealthy homeowners in the Morro Hills neighborhood saw a way that they could stop development. It's a fact that it's currently zoned for two and a half acres, and that's the zoning that SOAR will maintain. So two and a half acres means you can build one home on the two and a half acres, or if you have a bunch of two and a half acre chunks, you can do a farm production situation. The farmers who are there want to continue farming. They also want to retain the land values that they have, because they have to borrow money every year to pay for production of their crops. They don't make any money until the end of the year, so every year, the farmers borrow money based on the value of the land. If the value of the land is blocked by maintaining it in these two and a half acre parcels, they will not be able to function, but this is only from the farmers.
This is actually a very simple question. SOAR, I actually, you know, I helped put SOAR on the ballot, I'm firmly committed to it. In fact, it is, it's a popular idea, Ventura just renewed their moratorium on converting agricultural land for, up until 2050, so it actually works, but let me tell you something, it doesn't go far enough. And that's why we need more neighborhood representation, so that neighborhoods can maintain their integrity. Neighborhoods are made up of people, and too many of the arguments, you know, for, against SOAR are all based on finance, but let's face it, it's sprawl, okay? And that's what your, the opponents of SOAR won't tell you, and so, it's a simple one.
Okay, now we're going to some questions that have been specifically designed for each individual candidate, and we'll start with you, Susan. Your candidate statement indicates that you and your husband have lived in District One for 36 years. Considering the fact that you are also running against two incumbent city council members, why have you chosen to run for office this year, and why are you better qualified to hold the selected office than your opponents?
Well, I care very much about Oceanside and the development progress that has taken place over the last 36 years since when I first lived here. It's a time in my life where I can devote to something like this. I'm no longer busy raising children and working a full-time career, so I would really like to devote my time to continuing to help the city that I've grown to love and know so well, to improve and to move forward, and to have a positive direction. And I support a lot of the pro-business growth that has taken place in the city, I think it has contributed greatly to our improvement in the city, and that's what I'd like to see continue.
Thank you. Chuck? Your, this is your question, right? The last time you ran for, sorry about that. The last time you ran for election, you indicated that you would work to support small businesses and attract innovative companies to create good-paying jobs to grow Oceanside's economy. Have you done that during the last four years on the council, and if so, please give us some specific examples?
Sure. So it seems that the biggest business that's going on in Oceanside is construction. It's important that we realize that developers and builders are not the enemy, they're the ones who built all the homes we live in, they weren't built by people who just came up yesterday and helped you build your home the way you want it to be. So all the builders, the developers, the actual construction workers, the firefighters, the police officers, they are all in this same mix. When we have a business come to the city of Oceanside, most of the business that comes are people who already have operations somewhere else. One thing that I spent two years working on was crafting regulations so that we could allow medical cannabis operations in the city. That would bring in anywhere from $2 to $15 million a year in proceeds, not the money that they take, it's the money that we would make as a city. City council has opted to prevent retail sales in the city, but we are structurally allowing all the other businesses to function here, so that will bring in a lot of business that is completely not available in our surrounding cities, because they don't have the space to grow agricultural crops like cannabis.
Thank you. Michael, most people agree that affordable housing is one of the top priorities for our city. On your Facebook page, you advocate a tenfold increase in developer fee, in-lug fees, to fund additional parks. The city already has over 241 acres of parks, and that's not counting the harbor, the beaches, and Go Homey Regional Park. Do you prioritize additional parks over affordable housing?
I can tell you, I guess this is time to share a little bit about my background. I've designed master planned communities for most of my professional career. Award-winning committees, communities in La Jolla, in Newport Beach, in this city, actually, in La Mesa. Affordable housing in the industry has always been rental housing. Workforce housing is rental housing, except for the density bonus programs, and I don't know enough about the city's density bonus programs to comment on how well that's working, but I don't see us requiring developers to participate in that program. And right now, we're prostituting our land, $3,000 per household is all a developer has to pay to get out of providing a park for the neighborhood. So for $150,000, you're taking, you're, which is going into somebody else's program, you're, I mean, you're giving $150,000 to avoid a park, yeah, if I'm a developer, I'm going to pay $150,000, absolutely.
Thank you. Esther?
That's me.
Even though you still have two more years on the council as a member at large, you're running as a candidate in District One. Why?
District One is the home, as I said, of my dad, my, my family came in the 1930s, and this is the time to run for District One. I am so wanting to represent my home, District One, where I went to school, all the schools where I have my business, where I was able to stop from the, where the, I used to fish off the pier with my dad, with my grandfather. This is where I've done a lot of work, the housing, affordable housing that we've done on Mission Avenue, Mission Cove, La Misión, that was something that I personally was very much involved in. I've been involved with the redevelopment and ensuring that we got it jump-started. I've been involved with the neighborhoods, the most, the neighborhoods that need the most help, I've been working with that, in fact, I'm on the East Side Neighborhood Association Board, and it is where I know I can make the biggest, biggest impact. So I have been making it, I, this is something that I really, really want to do, is represent my community, my, my district, District One. Thank you.
Thank you. And Esther, I have a follow-up question, you also get a minute for this too.
Okay.
As a follow-up, if you are elected to District One council seat, you will need to resign from your current at-large council seat, creating a vacancy on the council. According to California Election Code, Section 10229, that vacancy can only be filled by an appointment by the newly-elected four-member council. If there's no agreement, the seat will remain vacant for two years, creating the potential for two, two votes. That would possibly bring the business of the city to a halt for 24 months. Who would you support as an appointment to fill the vacancy your District One election would create, and do you think there are two other council member votes to support your choices?
You know, this is something that would have to be determined at that point by the council, and I think that we'd have to hear from the community who would like to serve. The remainder of the two years actually would probably be, by then, it'd be less than that. Um, so I could, I, it would be, um, you know, really, um, not fair to actually say, "Oh yeah, let me think of a list of people I'd want to appoint." This is something that we'd have to work together on. And it ought to be someone that we can, you know, the, the rest of us be able to work with to ensure, um, the, the, um, economy goes forward. We do have an economic development, um, part of the element that we need to adopt. We also need to adopt the, um, Climate Action Plan. We have so many things before us that we really, really have to work together on and to bring the community together on, um, this organics recycling that is mandatory by the state. This is something we have to, that's another example that we need to, as a community, do the outreach and make sure that we're able to do this. So while I can't give you a name, I definitely will, will commit to, um, making sure that I work with the other, um, members of the council and the mayor and come up with someone who will be able to work with us to, for the best interest of the city. Thank you.
Change formats just a bit now. Each in front of you, you have a white card, a board, and a marker and an eraser. So we're going to ask some questions that obviously require relatively simple answer, one word or one number kind of thing. Write them, write them all down. And, uh, when you get all kind of ready, I'll, uh, let me know. And then we'll all raise them up so everybody can see them all at once, okay? Just for fun. Public safety is always an issue in any elec, any election. On that note, how many fire stations are in District One? Well, you could have waited a bit. Okay, we have--
Wait, I did it wrong. Okay, all right.
We have a one, and Chuck, you have two, and two, and one. Well, the fire stations, the correct answer is one. Wait a minute, oh, it's two, it's two, 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 two. I can't, I can't turn the page. It's two. There's one in Mission, and there's one out on, uh, Presley Road. They're downtown-- Yeah, there's two, there's two. Anyway, no matter what, I'm, I'm here, I zap two. Yeah, city sample, there you go. Here we go. Number two, rate, erase those numbers down. Workforce development is critical to the future of Oceanside's labor force. The Oceanside Chamber of Commerce works closely with the Oceanside Unified School District to promote the development of a strong, diverse, future workforce. According to the Oceanside Unified School District, how many active school sites are there in the city of Oceanside? Active school sites in the city of Oceanside? You guys should, you all should have gone to the Tuesday night thing, was to ask the questions there. Oh, we got a whole bunch of, I, 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 oh, you, you're writing them all down. So we have six, 23-- This, this isn't the entire city, not, not in your district, Esther, this is the entire city.
Oh, the entire city?
Yes.
Sorry, I thought you meant the district.
No, I said in the city of Oceanside. In the city of Oceanside. Okay, we have 23, we have 23. Are we all in a consensus now? Good. Good job.
In the district.
Okay, how many, just for fun, how many are in the district? Esther says six. And I'll give you a hint. It's either four, six, nine, or 11.
Sites or schools?
This is, this is schools where the kids actually go, the bus goes there, picks them up, takes them home. No bus, they walk, ride their bicycles. Oh, we got it. And nine, okay, well, the correct answer is nine. Now, there's a lot of school districts downtown. Okay, now erase all that.
I didn't count the trappers.
No, that's, that's, no, that's real schools with real TPS. Please erase the answer, oh, you did, okay. Business drives the economic engine for the city of Oceanside. According to the city of Oceanside's website, please name just two of the top five largest employers in our town. And I'm giving you a break on this one, too, and I'll tell you why in a second. Just two. And because my eyesight is very poor, you could just read them off to me, we can write them down. What was, Esther, did that far in? Susan, how many were you at?
Genentech and TE, I think it is connectivity.
Okay.
Oh, wait, well.
Okay, Chuck?
Uh, it says Walmart and Biogem, which is actually the name she used, Genentech.
Okay. Mike? Genentech and Tri-City Hospital, and Tri-City Medical Center, and who's the other one, Esther?
I said Tri-City, Oceanside--
Were you all, you all right?
Tri-City, Oceanside Unified, and Servivo.
They're all, they're all good. Actually, in the private sector, because I, I didn't say whether it's private or public, in the private sector, it's Genentech Pharmaceuticals, TE Communications, Hydronautics, Nito Benko, Gillian Sciences, and Hobycat. Except that was quite interesting. In the public sector, it's Oceanside Unified School District, Camp Pendleton, City of Oceanside, Miracosta Community College, North County Transit District, and Tri-City Medical Center. Okay, the last, erase it all again, and now your last question. And those folks who are there on Tuesday night have a, have an advantage. We hear a great deal about the city of Oceanside's unfunded pension obligation. How much is the approximate amount of the city's current unfunded pension debt? And this is according to the Oceanside City Manager.
Okay, 200, uh--
200 million.
200?
Chuck?
Yes.
200, 250? It's 200 million. 230?
It is 230.
Okay, well, approximately. I'm sure, I'm sure you're, you're closer to Michelle than I. Now, let's, let's go back to the narrative questions and ask at each of you the same one. And this time, we're going to be starting with you, Chuck. It's your turn to go first. You ready?
Yep.
We just learned that the city of Oceanside's current unfunded pension obligation is over $200 million, 230. What is your plan to meet this obligation? What is your plan to meet this obligation?
Well, the city has in place already activity to make that happen. And I've consistently voted to support that. But one thing I want to point out is if we have a four-person council, like we did last year for eight months, we will not be able to make those decisions because the council splits down the middle. And it says, yes, we want to cut down on the pensions, and no, we don't want to cut down on the pensions. We want to do this with the money instead, or we don't want to spend any money. So currently, the city is saving money on our pensions by, uh, negotiations with our employees so that they pay more of their commitment into the pensions out of their money instead of it being the city having to pay that. So that changes the proportion of how much responsibility we have as an agency. In addition to that, the city staff is consistently watching for points where we can save money. And they use that at the end of the year to pay down that debt. On top of that, I will say again, if we go to a four-person council, that goes away because the council immediately disagrees on how the action is to be taken to compensate for that.
Well, let me start first by saying that, uh, this is a problem that has to be solved in the next four years because the way things are slated, we're going to be in a deficit situation. So this is something that we need to talk a little bit more about. Like I said earlier, we all have to make sacrifices. So I think that part of it is, uh, yeah, we have to put a cap on how much, uh, of a pension a person can expect to get. But at the same time, I think that our tourism industry is, has such a high demand now that we can afford to raise our transit occupancy taxes. And, uh, we are already implementing, uh, a half percent sales tax. But I would try to, uh, use tourism as much as possible to, uh, uh, fill in the gap. Also, I think with our new cannabis laws, we, we can, uh, get some, uh, revenue from that, which I think will actually be bigger than we realized. Thank you.
Thank you. Esther?
Thank you. We have been working together on this. I, I don't believe we've ever actually had a disagreement on this topic especially because we all want to ensure, uh, a balanced budget going forward and also to, uh, pay down on the PERS, um, liability. So we have, uh, done something very, uh, unique was, um, but that other cities have done is we did, um, form a trust fund, um, that has, um, a little more risk. So it would be, uh, the interest would be at, uh, 3% versus the regular 1% on our portfolio. We've, um, have done a soft freeze on city jobs. Um, we also voted in that any excess funds, a third of that, will go to paying off our PERS. We also actually paid, um, a major, made a major payment of, um, along with our prepayments every year. Uh, we made a major payment of $8 million. I also want to, um, say that our, our employees have also been paying down, are actually paying their fair share. And also, we have a cap on, uh, healthcare costs. So pretty much, we've done everything that we can, um, under the law, under state law. Thank you.
To cover the unfunded pension, the city currently has a 115 fund. And that money is invested. And the proceeds of that money go directly to cover the unfunded pension. So the principal is not used for the unfunded pension, but any proceeds that are made from the investment of the principal are used. I think we definitely need to continue that. We also do need to, for future, uh, pensions, we do need to have the employees cover more of their own cost. However, the real concern is the unfunded pensions that have already been designated for retirees that'll be coming up soon or have already retired. And the, uh, half a percent sales tax is supposed, not supposed to be allowed to go to unfunded pensions. Uh, it's supposed, this oversight will not allow that. So we really have to focus on the 115 fund.
Chuck? Once, once is enough. Mike, it's your turn. Taxes are always a hot button in campaigns and elections, and elections. Do you support the city's initiative to increase the local sales tax measure X on the ballot, why or why not?
X and Y?
This is X.
Yes, I support it, and we pretty much, um, what, what is funded through that were these funds, um, to help pay off our PERS obligations. So, um, I, I do support it.
Thank you. This is about X and the, um, the half-cent sales tax, which will generate about $11.2 million a year for seven years, so 77 point something million dollars. And, uh, we're in, we're in need of infrastructure improvements. We need a new fire station one, we need a new fire station eight. Uh, we do need to do something about the bathrooms at the, at the pier. Um, we, we do need to talk about, uh, a more permanent, um, solution to the police department. We do have some, um, some other things that we need to also address. And I am supporting this, um, for that reason, because we do need these, um, and this is, this is a general sales tax, so the council could go and do something different. But because of that, um, review, Citizens Review Committee, I feel that there are some, you know, balances in place. So I do support it, and I feel that, uh, the city, we have moved from, um, small buildings or one, two-story buildings to mid-rise and more chemical, um, fires. So we definitely, definitely need this for public safety. Thank you.
Susan?
Oh, sorry.
Measure X.
Yes, measure X. Uh, I do not support measure X. I think that there are, we need to manage the income and the money that we currently have. Uh, we haven't talked about vacation rentals, but in the first four, in the four months ending March 31st of 2418, that vacation rentals brought in $2.6 million. There is a lot of movement towards, uh, doing away with vacation rentals. I think we should not do away with those small businesses because they bring in a 10% TOT tax. Uh, and we should tax the people that come to our city and use it just briefly for a week or two rather than impose an additional tax, which will not engen, uh, generate as much revenue on those of us that live here full-time via the sales tax.
So the local sales tax initiative was approved by the council to go to a public vote. I hope the people realize that the city does need the money to maintain our high-quality emergency services. Police and fire calls are up. Fire department calls are up about 18% over what they were one year ago. They're using all of that equipment and personnel to meet all those calls. That puts more mileage on the equipment, so we need to replace some of the fire engines. We definitely need to increase our, uh, inventory of ambulances. We need to hire and retain high-quality service employees so that we can make sure that the people of Oceanside get what they are paying for. And that is the number one concern when I go out and talk to residences. They're, the residents believe that they need to have safe response times, not 10 minutes or 11 minutes. So we have to be sure to maintain that. The only way to do that is to invest money in it. And I think a half-cent sales tax is not a big hit on anybody's pocketbook spread out over the entire community. That will be a significant source of funds.
Thank you, Sharon. Third question, this will be for you, Esther. Mike, did you get it?
Yours.
I was the first to respond.
Thank you. That means you will be the first response this time, Ms. Sanchez. What do you see as the most critical issue related to businesses in your district? The critical issue related to business in your district?
You know, I, I think that we really need to maintain our commercial areas. We're, we've lost so much, um, in this, um, you know, uh, zest to build more and more housing. As I said, we, we've actually been called a, a bedroom community by the independent study. So I, I really feel that, um, we, we need to support businesses. We need to attract more businesses. Uh, we need to, uh, increase that, uh, jobs to housing, uh, ratio. Right now, we have the lowest, as I indicated, 0.68% versus the, uh, the rest of the county, which is at 1.24. So I believe that, um, we need to, uh, work with the schools, with Miracosta, get, uh, our, our community in terms of, um, our kids especially, in terms of, um, whether they go to college or, or think about a business, get some early training on learning a business and learning how to balance a budget. So that's what I would do. Thanks.
Thank you. Susan?
Could you repeat, repeat the question?
Absolutely. What do you see as the most critical issue related to business in your district?
Um, I believe that we need to streamline the business approval and permitting process so that it doesn't take so long and isn't so expensive. We need to improve the qualities of our schools so that employers will want to come here and that the, uh, employees will want to live here. Um, we also need to maintain our roads. We do need more business. We, and that will generate the tax revenue that we need rather than raising it, as I said, on the, uh, full-time residents here. We need to maintain our safety. Again, that causes business and people to want to live here. So safety, roads, and schools are very important for bringing business, additional business to our community.
As, uh, the acting mayor, last year I had a lot of meetings with the, uh, Innovate 78 Corridor. That was the city of Oceanside, Carlsbad, Vista, San Marcos, and Escondido. All five of those cities interacted together to find out what our mutual needs were and how could, we could mutually help each other. One thing that I learned from that was if we can't fit someone into our city with the infrastructure that we have, we can suggest that they go to San Marcos or Carlsbad if they have better infrastructure. Talking about infrastructure, we need to really be able to supply mobility for people who are not only the owner-manager types, but the people who are the, the employees and staffing for all the different businesses that we have here right now. We may not have adequate warehousing space, but we need to improve our transportation systems. So that means we pump money into mass transit and into increasing our assets on, uh, highways, but to make it more efficient. I'm on the board of Sandag, and they have approved $900 million and are spending it this year on infrastructure needs. So that includes everything that you see as far as freeway and roadway widening and transit opportunities that are being improved.
That's, that's a really broad question. I think because Oceanside Boulevard is in my district, I'm going to focus on the High Tech Corridor and how we really need to move forward with a master plan that integrates institutional cooperation with the university so that we can have satellite campuses and, um, uh, research centers around our transit-oriented stops. research centers around our transit-oriented stops. I think this is something that's missing in our local planning, and something I'm actually experienced with having done, participated in the long-range master planning of the University of California at Irvine. I think the biggest general issue is rising energy costs, and I have already proposed a solution for the chamber to participate in the Power Your Drive program. Right now, they're offering free infrastructure, but we need to plug into it. So, I think part of what we need to be able to do is to learn how to cooperate with our energy providers in the area.
Thank you. Susan, this is the next question for you, and these are all designed for individual... No, I'm sorry. I'm not doing well today. I apologize. This is question four. This will be answered by all of you. Okay, but we'll start with you, Susan. If it passes with the voters in November, Measure Y, also referred to as SOAR, will require that all parcels in the Morro Hills area have a minimum of two-and-a-half-acre lot sizes. As the underlying zoning will be agricultural, these two-and-a-half-acre sites will be, by right, they will be able to greenhouse 20,000 square feet of marijuana. Are you concerned that with the passage of Measure Y, the Morro Hills area will be inundated, inundated with marijuana farms?
I'm really not concerned with that. I believe that the free market will take care of that issue. Initially, yes, there may be a whole lot of marijuana farms out there. Initially, everyone may jump on the bandwagon, but those that succeed will stick around, and many of them will fall by the wayside, because of course, the more crop that's grown in this area, the lower the price will come, and with the cost of water and everything required to grow, you know, it'll have to be profitable for all of those farms to continue. So, I think that the fair market, I mean, the free market will take care of the number of marijuana growers in the South Morro Hills area.
So, Measure Y, the SOAR initiative, is what we're talking about here. As far as how many greenhouses you can build on a piece of property, the zoning restrictions that are in place as a result of the regulations that we created last year, and the city will restrict it to one per property. So, the idea of building anymore on the property is highly unlikely, because the zoning won't allow that. The city can change that if we implement all of our regulations that are in place right now, but there's a likelihood of a citizens' initiative coming forward, and that will wipe out all the work we've done as a city. So, it's very important that the city finish our existing regulations and make them work. Currently, you cannot start anything out there based on, agriculturally, based upon the zoning. Everyone who wants to farm cannabis will have to build greenhouses. It's not going to be just open fields with green plants in them, and it's a very expensive, highly industrialized process that has to be maintained. It's very expensive to do that. I believe that the people who do it have to have experience before they come in to do that, and we're trying to go through that right now at City Hall.
Can you please repeat the question?
Absolutely. If it passes with the voters in November, Measure Y, also referred to as the SOAR initiative, will require that all parcels in the Morro Hills area have a minimum of two-and-a-half acre lot sizes. As the underlying zoning will be agricultural, these two-and-a-half-acre sites will be, by right, the owner will be able to greenhouse 20,000 square feet of marijuana. Are you concerned that the passage of marijuana, Measure Y, and the passage of Measure Y, I'm sorry, the Morro Hills area will be inundated with marijuana farms? No, I have not been smoking marijuana.
Frankly, I don't think it's going to be inundated with marijuana, but I don't think we should forbid it either.
Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, Measure Y does not create two-and-a-half-acre lots. Oceanside, as we all know, was agricultural, and now, less than 15% is left for agricultural, less than 15%. What Measure Y says is that, okay, if there is a zone change, this must go to the people and then, and the people, let the people decide. Two-and-a-half-acre lots is what we've had since the beginning of time, I don't know, since 1888 maybe, so it hasn't really caused problems with, like, you know, there's still farms out there that are 300-acre lots, I mean, 300 acres and more. Actually, the anti-SOR is basically two big farmers. Most of the farmers support SOAR, as do the citizens of Oceanside. This is basically something to ensure that we will not have traffic congestion. We're not, we're not built to be able to have all that housing, all, like, you know, I don't know, 10,000 houses out there. This will seriously result in congestion and, in our inability to have perhaps even our own police department, fire department, because right now, it's at 62% of our budget pays for our public safety. So, if it gets any bigger than that, we're going to have to start looking at contracting out, and that's something I do not want to do. Thank you.
Good. Okay. Questions? These are questions will be asked of each individual person, and we're going to start with you, Chuck. I think you're the first one up on this one. And here's the question. We know that it's the Army Corps of Engineers' responsibility to dredge our harbor and to keep it safe for navigation. While they are not obligated to do say, to do so, they traditionally place that sand on our local beaches. Over the years, it's become clear that this is a, quote, "put it on and watch it go" solution to our sand-depleted beaches. The Corps, this is the Army Corps of Engineers, has an incomplete, outdated coastal survey that is frequently cited as offering hope for a permanent solution when it is completed. However, there's no date for that completion. Leaving the Army Corps of Engineers completely out of the solution, what is your plan to get and keep sand on our beaches?
Okay, so, you're suggesting that we close the harbor, because that's the only permanent solution we would have, and I don't think we can do that. So, the question is based upon not viewing the entire field of concerns that we have here. The Army Corps of Engineers, the city met with them today, even though we're leaving them out of the question, and they committed to dredging the harbor in October, putting 108,000 cubic feet of sand on the beaches this fall, which will wash away over the winter, and then they will place 340,000 cubic feet of sand on the beaches in the spring. In addition to that, they have obtained a 10-year environmental permit for dredging, so what happened this year will not happen again in the future. At least, that won't be the excuse they use. So, we have to look at all of the possibilities that we have as a city and what kind of revenue stream we want to make up, and even if the sales tax is approved, that is not going to be enough money to buy infrastructure needs, the actual physical equipment that we need to pump out the sand every year to create sort of our own homegrown permanent solution. I don't think there's anything that we can do with groynes or anything else offshore, because the State Coastal Commission will not allow that. I am looking forward to the next 10 years of being a lot less stressful, however.
Thank you. Mike, of the nine candidates running for city council in District 1 and 2, you appear to be the only one who did not file a ballot statement for the upcoming election. Why?
Well, it's been a long time since I've been in politics. To be honest, I, I'm only doing this because I think we need some changes, and I'm very unhappy with the direction that this city has chosen to take with the amount of corruption and the sacrifice of accessible parks. I'm sorry, one more time, the question again?
You didn't file a ballot statement?
Oh. So, I thought that was tied to a $1,400 fee to have it translated into, I don't know, 50 different languages? And, and I really don't believe in that. So, I was happy just to keep, I mean, yeah, that's it. I think it was an unnecessary expense. Thank you.
Okay, good question for you, Esther. When you ran for election in 2012, your ballot statement said you would soon bring $100 million in jobs and infrastructure improvements to the city. It's now six years later. Have you done that, and if so, please give us some specific examples of the $100 million in jobs you've created?
Right, so at the time, we were moving on the Buena Vista Lagoon improvements, and I actually got Sandag to go to finish the EIR. And once finished, it would have been on the top of the public works projects that would have been funded. It still is possible. It has actually taken longer than I really expected it would. In fact, the EIR, while it is complete, has not been adopted yet by Sandag, and that would have put it on the top, and that would, will put it on the top of the public works projects for the Coastal Commission in terms of the mitigation for the I-5 widening. There is still disagreement by some, some in the community about what the, whether it should be salt or fresh. If we had 100% agreement that this EIR would have been done, finished a long time ago, but that is what, it's going to cost about $150 million to complete the improvements to Buena Vista Lagoon, and that, that will bring a lot of jobs to Oceanside, specifically to Oceanside. Like I said, that was a high priority for all the environmental agencies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan? As a professional, full-time real estate agent, you are aware of the importance of public education with our community. What is your opinion of the Oceanside Unified School District? And if elected, how would you work to strengthen the current working relationships between the city and the school district?
Well, I think that we do need to improve our schools. Unfortunately, they're not rated as high as they should be to encourage employers and families with children to want to move here. I would work closely with the city, with the school board to try to improve the quality of the education, and also with the, oh, you know, the guy that runs the school. The superintendent of schools, yes. Probably, it would be good if we could hire more teachers and have smaller class sizes. I do know that it's been a while since I had kids in school, but, you know, they went away from allowing kids to even take their books home to do homework, and they need to be able to go home and take their books and study when they get home, so they can be prepared fully for the next day. And perhaps include, encourage parent involvement and help to go over any materials that they're not understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. I was asked early on at this point in the reception, to, the reception, the forum, to take about a 30-second to 45-second break. The audience, the people that wrote the questions from the audience aren't, didn't leave, because we're going to be asking those questions next, and it looks like we're going to be starting with you, Mr. Lowry. This will be the first one. Okay, this is for the audience, and we'll do the round robin, all of you will have a chance to answer it, and then, once again, I will repeat it as necessary. The Oceanside Airport has been the subject of much community debate. In 29, 2009, a private contractor took over management of the airport. What is your views on the governance of this municipal facility?
Well, we've, in addition to the governance of the facility being leased by one company, we are getting routinely comments or concerns from residents who are affected directly by the airplanes flying over their houses. And after hearing about that for some time, I did a tour of the airport just last week and discussed community concerns with the management and the actual operators of the Go-Jump, the skydiving people, and the general manager. And we pointed out to them some issues that we have as a community of concern. One of those issues was backpacks and GoPros dropping in your backyard. That was a problem for some people, but it was mostly a concern that they might hit them or injure a child. So, we asked them to please take into consideration that this is a concern for the larger community, not just the people who live adjacent to the airport, and we, as a city, have responsibility to make sure they operate it in a safe manner, and I believe that they will do that. We have asked them to improve their systems and to respond to consumer reports directly to the people who report the issues.
Thank you. Mike? Do you want to read the question again?
I, I, I know enough, I know enough, no, no, I don't have an answer to your question at this point.
Okay.
I haven't interviewed the people on the, on the issue, and I just don't think it would be appropriate for me even to re-slot at this point. Thank you.
Okay. Esther?
Thank you. We've had a long-going, gosh, I guess it even started even before I got on the council, issues with the airport and the community, and trying to find a balance here, because Principal P. Savvy was there, of course, before, before the airport, and had to move because of the '76. We pushed really hard on, for example, the touch-and-goes and trying to get the pilots to fly over the river and the pathways that, that made it much better for the residents and not, you know, not going, coming within, you know, being able to see the eyeballs of the pilots. And what we learned as a community, as a city, is that once that plane is up there, the FAA will not allow us to do anything. So, I was opposed to having a 50-year contract. I really tried hard to have us reduce that down to 20, maybe 20 or 30 years. Didn't happen. So, at this point, we need to be able to work as closely as possible with the airport operator, unless there's some kind of cause that we can, you know, re-enter the contract. But at this point, yes, it is very discouraging to have things falling in the, falling from the, from the air onto residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Could you repeat the question?
Certainly. The Oceanside Airport has been the subject of much community debate. In 2009, a private contractor took over management of the airport. What are your views on governance of this municipal, municipal facility?
Well, I do know it's a long and tedious process to close down an airport. The fact that he took over management of the airport, and I assume has it for 50 years, it's encouraging to hear that he will listen to the, to the community and try to rectify any problems that may be arising from the activities there. Going to have to look further into the question to get more information.
Thank you. This is another question from the audience, and Mike, it'll be addressed to you and the rest of the staff in order. City staff has recommended against the North River Farms project. What value do you place on city staff's recommendation?
What value do I place on a simple against? Well, I'll just tell you from this, from the beginning, I happen to work for the same company that designed that proposal, and I already commented at the meeting that that site is situated in a very dangerous fire corridor, and I was disappointed that they expressed some agricultural theming at the front, but really didn't put agricultural uses as a buffer along the open space areas where the embers go right across the horse farm adjacent to it on the north side. And so, I said, and I, maybe I was trying to be too polite as a professional, that I was very disappointed that fuel modification wasn't part of the solution. And I'd like to say also that I have found this city too reluctant to ask developers to participate in problem-solving, some of the other issues, and I hope that we will see a homeless therapeutic community in our agricultural areas soon. I think it's something we can't wait on. Thank you.
Thank you. Esther?
Thank you. I believe that our city, that our city has some really high-quality directors, especially in the planning division, and they, the, the staff recommended back, what is it, a year ago now, against going forward on the North River Farms project. Basically, went through criteria, listed criteria, as to whether or not the, there would be a public, public pluses. In other words, that somehow it'll give us something positive, for example, affordable housing. So, they went through the criteria. Affordable housing, no, there's, there are no services out there. Smart growth, is it consistent with smart growth? No. Again, it would be very, very difficult to provide services out there and would cost the city much more money to do, to provide services like police, fire. It would, I think there were like eight or nine other criteria that basically said, no, 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 no. So, bottom line is that I do have put a lot of support in our, in our staff, in belief in what they do. They do what's best for the citizens of Oceanside, and it's going to cost us a lot of money. They do what's best for the citizens of Oceanside and, um, it's going to cost us a lot of money to, to make this happen. In fact, it's probably going to cost us our own police and fire departments. Thank you.
Susan?
Yes, could you repeat, repeat the question again, please?
City staff, city staff has recommended against the North River Farms Project. What value do you place on city staff's recommendation?
Well, I do think the city staff thoroughly researches all of their, uh, you know, project, all of the projects that come before the city. And I place quite a bit of value on their recommendation. Oftentimes, I think that they, you know, we need to go back and relook at a, at an issue and see if we can solve some of the problems that the staff come, came up with. Uh, I don't think we can just, uh, decide against this project simply because there are some issues that need to be addressed. And yes, fire and safety would be one of them. And I think that we have to find a way to address that out in that area.
So the answer about staff. Uh, staff is paid to do their jobs and they're all full-time employees in, on projects like this. We have highly competent staff because they like working for the city of Oceanside. So I, as an elected representative, must work with them. And they're the people who answer my questions when I have questions. I asked them specifically about this project, starting three weeks ago, and you might have noticed that we canceled it from last week's council agenda because we were hit with only four council members available. That's that problem with having only four people there because you have a tie vote and that's a no vote. So we spend a lot of time and money putting together information. And then if we only have four people, we're going to throw all that time and money away. At this point, there are four options for that land. One is to leave it the way it is. One is to work on agritourism, which we've been doing. One is to work on an agri-vision, which the residents of the area have been working on on their own. And the other one is the development that's called North River Farms. So we have a lot of options to look at. I have asked staff to be really specific with us as a council and tell us exactly what their concerns are. We will explore that more at the next meeting when we have five council members there to vote on it.
Thank you. Uh, Esther, you're up for the first one for the next round, right? What's your reason for running and will you seek higher office should you be elected? Did we miss you?
Yes.
I thought I did. Once again, I'm, I'm not having a good day. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
The stars aren't aligned on me tonight. Go ahead. You want the question again?
You're going to ask me a new question now, right?
I was? Okay. What's your reasoning for running and will you seek higher office should you be elected?
No. Um, uh, I'm, I'm running because for the last three years, I've been seeking representation against corruption in my city. We had a council member who was an employee, employee of the landowner participate in a narrowly approved, uh, vote that ended up with our neighborhood losing its only playfield. My neighborhood is mostly apartments. And, um, the, I, I, I really appreciate Esther Anshup for both siding with me on this, but we're not effective yet. We are still, um, we're, we're suffering because we don't have high standards for, uh, transparency in this city. And I will change that. Actually, I was invited, uh, by a group that organized about a year ago to help start an anti-corruption committee. And we've already had an effect. And so, um, I will continue that. Thank you.
Esther?
Thank you. I'm running, uh, primarily because we still have a long way to go in terms of bringing jobs to Oceanside. There's this, um, wonderful, uh, place where we call the swap meet, where we have ninety acres and that pretty soon, um, will be a place, hopefully that we can attract a, a major, um, industrial use or uses, um, to bring jobs to Oceanside. That's what I want to do. I really want to focus on bringing more jobs to Oceanside and raise that level of jobs to household. I also want to make sure that we continue with our public safety, our own public safety. Um, I want to make sure that the, that the infrastructure should X, um, pass. I want to make sure that it is spent, um, the way that it has been presented to the community. Uh, that's a lot of money and, um, you know, I don't want us, I want to make sure that the promises that we make to the community that we make, um, make do on that. And I want to make sure, uh, that right now, um, we are at a crossroads in terms of our environment, in terms of, um, economic development. And the wrong, the wrong, um, council will take us backwards. That's my concern. I've worked so hard to make this a better community. Uh, people say wonderful things about how Oceanside has changed. And I think we've done that together as a community. And I'm, I'm concerned that, um, without making sure that somebody stands strongly for economic development, it will go backwards. Thank you.
Susan?
Um, yes, I, it was a two-part question. One is, why am I running and the other, will I run for higher off, office? At the moment, I'm not thinking about higher office. I'm only thinking about city council. So I'll answer that in the future. Uh, my, the main reasons I'm running, again, are I love the city and I want to continue, to see it continue the improvements it's made over the last thirty years. I'm very focused on safety. We need to communicate well with the, uh, fire and police to, uh, know what their issues are and to be able to address their issues. Schools are very important. In order to get jobs here, we have to have good schools. We have to have, have a safe community. We have to have housing. And we have to have family-friendly activities for the people that do move, move here. Um, there's also a few issues that I'd like to see is the riverbed cleaned up so that it would be a great place for families to bike ride. Uh, but there's a lot of drugs and homeless and prostitution down there that needs to be cleaned up to continue to improve that part of the city as well as others. Thank you.
Would you briefly repeat the question? Two parts?
Yes. What's your reason for running, running? And will you seek higher office should you be elected?
I have no interest in seeking higher office. My reason for running is that I enjoy being thoughtful about what's going on in city council. After only being on the council for two months, I went to Washington DC with staff and was able to secure housing for forty homeless veterans. City had never asked for that before or received it. I went back the following year and they said, we've changed our criteria. Unless you've done a good job with it, we're not going to give you any money. We had done a good job with it, so they gave us money again. These are veterans who are living down in the river there or living in their cars. So this allowed for housing that was already built to us, to have coverage for people to move into those homes. The reason I'm running is that that kept reminding me that there are things that an individual council member can do if we really care about what the issues are. So whether it's bringing vouchers, that was from the Veterans Administration for our vets, or bringing money in to help us with our infrastructure needs, the federal department, the federal government is someone we have to work with and they will listen to one representative of the city going with staff. And it's a hard situation when you have to think about all the issues. When you're a council member, you can choose to take the easy way out on everything and vote no on all of it. That is not the way we get things done. We can't vote no on everything.
Thank you. Uh, this would be your question, uh, for you, Esther, right? Is that the right order? Or did I, I didn't, I didn't skip again, did I, Mike? No. What's your plan to deal with short-term rentals, particularly in West Oceanside? Short-term rentals in West Oceanside?
You know, staff tried to do something a couple of years ago and, uh, got buried in a lot of, uh, pushback. It is something that's very, very critical, number one, because we are, we are in a housing crisis and, uh, we ought to be able to rely at least on some of the homes. Uh, the, uh, short-term rentals are going, not just on the coast anymore, but, uh, pretty much going inland. And, uh, that really does hurt our, our supply of housing. So right now, as I understand it, the planning commission is formed a committee. Um, this is something that, you know, with time, with the passage of time, already the city of San Diego is tackling this and, um, coastal commission is also tackling this. Of course, the coastal commission will, will be a major player in this. But, uh, pretty much, I think we need to have a balance where you, you know, you can, uh, we can increase revenue via, um, TOT, but we also have to ensure, uh, a, a housing supply. So that's what I would be doing. Thank you.
Susan?
Yes. Um, as I said earlier, the short-term rentals bring in two-point, brought in two-point-six million dollars in tax revenue in the four months ending March thirty-first. I don't think that we can afford to just reduce that income. It's also expected to grow, the TOT is expected to grow ten-point-seven percent over the next year. Most of the short-term rentals are very well-run. There are issues with some. And I think that we need to have a, um, uh, on-call code enforcement. Uh, and whoever's short-term rental requires the code enforcement to come out to address issues, that homeowner needs to pay a FAN and either reduce the, uh, you know, if those issues continue to be a problem with that same homeowner, homeowners, then it may have to be addressed, uh, more in a stronger way. If they're licensed and, uh, regulated, then it would be possible to remove their license if they are unwilling to control their rental.
Short-term vacation rentals, that's where someone owns a home and rents it out to people who are there for a couple of days or maybe a couple of weeks. I have two of those directly behind my home. One of them was left, the, the people who would come left their dogs in the yard repeatedly over and over all day long, barking because they were lonely. And I reported that to the city because a resident who lived across the street reported it to me. And I, uh, reported some other issues with, uh, one of those properties. You can see it tonight on News Ten. The owner of one of the properties got angry that I was reporting her for violating city regulations. And so they decided that it was more important to go after me because I was speaking out against them. And I knew that we did not have consequential regulations in place. So they were violating all kinds of construction regulations, habitation, all kinds of issues like that. And so watch News Ten tonight, you'll see them talking about it and wonder why it went so quickly. The problem is that we don't have unanimity on the council. Some people think that it's just going to be this free-market situation where people volunteer to take care of themselves. The others of us think that we have to have good regulations, and that's my opinion. We have to have good regulations, not put people out of business, make them follow being good neighbors to everyone who lives in town. Thank you.
Mike?
Well, we're in the rental business. And, um, we have to provide, and, and it's been long in this city's history to provide one parking stall per bedroom. However, uh, we're getting very, uh, loose on our standards and you're only as good as your standards, right? Isn't that what we say to our daughters, right? Um, we have rules and laws to keep us from killing each other, right? And short-term rentals are businesses, they're residential hotels. They've become that. And yet we've evaluated, the problem is that we've, we've been evaluating them according to the residential standards in their zoning districts. And that was totally wrong to do that. It's an abuse of zoning and I think our planning department should have, uh, prevented that. In any case, I think that San Diego, uh, came up with a good solution to allow them for primary residences. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, you answered that question too, right, Esther? You started that one? Yes, you did. Okay. So Susan, you're, you're up. Other than serving or, or running for city council, what do you volunteer for?
Oh, okay. I volunteer for the Kiwanis Club of Oceanside. I've been a member for ten years and I'm about to be, uh, start my third term as president. I volunteer for the, uh, American Cancer Society Relay for Life. That's an event held, uh, to raise money for cancer every year at Maricopa State College. Um, I volunteer for, I've been on the Marina Towers Board. Uh, uh, I have a few other things. I've got to think here. Um, what else keeps me busy? Um, I was very active in the Olmish and Monastery School when my kids were younger and went to school there. Um, oh, I can't think of what else. I could look at my cheat sheet though, uh, if I have time. The Relay for Life, um, well, in the, uh, Kiwanis, we help young kids in the community that need, uh, projects and so forth. Okay, thank you.
Second question?
Yes, sir.
What do we do with our spare time?
Yes.
Okay, I'm on the city council. It's actually legally a twenty-hour-a-week job. I never have a twenty-hour work week. It's a forty-to-fifty-hour work week. I do a really good job with that. I take it home with me. I spend a lot of time doing research, making phone calls, reading personal emails that have answers to questions. But in addition to that, I still have time to be on the board of the Tari Kamisa Foundation, which is in San Diego. And their mission is to educate youth so that they realize it's not a good idea to get involved with gangs. They educate them by reaching out into their, into the schools and having, uh, people there to mentor them. It's an expensive operation, but I really love being a part of that group. I've been on their board for about five years. Uh, so that means before I was on city council. And other than that, oh my gosh, really? I have time to cook dinner, eat, walk the dog, go to yoga a couple of days a week and that's it. I can't volunteer for anything else. I have lots of offers and many interests, but it's just impossible to do any more than I'm doing. And I love doing the job that I'm doing because it's very educational. I have an inquisitive mind. I want to know more about what's going on. And I really am, am engaged in our Oceanside community.
Hey, Mike?
I, uh, I really, I, well, I, I play piano for the women's club in town. They, they've asked me on several occasions to, uh, help them with some of their events and I'm happy to do it. Um, I've given gallons of my O-positive, CMV-negative blood to save, uh, babies and people with compromised immune systems. Um, I helped start an anti-corruption committee in this city. Um, I'm a member of the Rotary Club and the Oceanside Outrigger Canoe Club. Um, but I'm mostly here because of my mom who needs my care. I'm taking care of her as well. Thank you.
Thank you. She's here, Mona. Yeah, Mona, she's right up there. Hi, Mom.
Thank you. Well, I love Oceanside. I love our communities and I love Osiders. And so, yeah, it is like a seven, um, seven, twenty-four-seven job. I get calls all day, even nights, and I love helping people. Um, sometimes it's about a legal issue, sometimes it's about a city issue. And I take the time, I answer all my, um, personal calls. Um, and, uh, so while I am on the East Side Neighborhood Association, um, it, that goes above and beyond because we, we, you know, have several, uh, programs going through there and work a lot with the kids and, um, anti-gang, um, positive programs. Um, also, I'm the chair of Noche Mexicana, which has been now, this is our fourteenth year doing this. It's, it's a, it's a wonderful, wonderful cultural event that shows off the talent of the local Latino community. We also started about fourteen years ago, Day of the Child. And that's something that we're very, very proud of, um, in the community. So, um, I'm, as I said, I'm also, also a lawyer. So I do, uh, legal work and, um, there isn't a whole lot of time to do other volunteer work, but I love helping people and that's pretty much twenty-four-seven. Thank you.
One is that we have to clear out the silting, the speed of the silting in that river. They canceled it just a few days before we were scheduled to start the work and the city had already done a lot of infrastructure improvements to make it safe for people who are riding their bikes or walking or whatever. Uh, so all we can do with that is fight with the Army Corps of Engineers and, and get permits to do the work on our own. That's a lot of money. But in addition to that, we can continue to harangue the feds to ask them to help us clear it down because the brush is providing a lot of habitat for homeless people. There are also tents in there that people are living in. We, what happens is we have our homeless outreach team, which is a part of the police department, go out and discuss the, uh, situation and possible access to community services, county services with the people who are living there. We have to continue doing that, but at the same time, we have to look for ways to get money to remove the silting because that silting creates flooding potential for all the neighboring communities.
Mike? Is there a homeless in the San Luoy River?
Well, that's part of the problem. The, the problem's all over, including on Oceanside Boulevard. Um, and I forgot to say also, I'm a, I'm a cert member. I haven't, um, affiliated with Oceanside yet, but I'm trained and credentialed, uh, in Costa Mesa and that's one of the things I do enjoy doing. Um, Community Emergence Response Team. What I think we need to do is, uh, we, the, it's an emerging winner, as I mentioned earlier, is creating, um, a therapeutic farming community. Um, there are, uh, about, I think, if you look at the state's total homeless population, um, and you extract out what Oceanside's share of that would be, basically come up with fifty. And I think that we could build fifty small, tiny homes, uh, in a, probably a five-acre site where they can do organic farming and they can re- where they can do organic farming and they can receive therapeutic services that they need to get them rehabilitated. But it seems that several places in California is using this model and it seems to work. I would support something like that. We would, of course, work with churches and everybody else that's helping with that issue. But I think the issue here is really getting them the help that they need.
Thank you.
The hot team, which is a homeless outreach. And now we have two teams and we also have a social worker to be able to do referrals. But we need to do, to work on this on a more regional level. We need to push back on Orange County that is allowing homeless to come from there and also San Diego County. We need to export the idea of hot teams so that other cities and the county have these. Previously, we also donated or contributed towards, say, a transition housing situation. That's what we need to do. We don't have transitional housing for homeless in Oceanside. We don't have the land, you know, that's just the bottom line. But we can, you know, contribute to that kind of a plan. And that's what I would really like to do, is approach this as a regional issue, get our homeless outreach team out to other areas and also bring back the mental health units at Tri-City Hospital, which are being closed on October 2nd. We need to ensure that our mental health are able to get services and this is going to be a tremendous, tremendous issue in the next few months, if not a couple of years. Thank you.
Susan?
First of all, we have to remember that homelessness is not a crime. It's an unfortunate situation for most people. We do need to help connect the homeless to the services that are available. There are a lot of nonprofit organizations that do provide services to the homeless and we do need to use our hot teams, which are very effective at helping the homeless. Their job is not to take them all to the services or transportation, but they can help make aware, the homeless, make them aware of where they can get services. So I think that's what we really need to start with. I think a lot of the people that are, have just become homeless or recent homeless is faking the services. And there are the long-term homeless who, for them, it's a way of life and they're used to it, they like it, they want to stay that way. And that's a much more difficult situation to deal with. Thank you.
When do you think the new pool will be completed?
This is the new swimming pool for the city of Oceanside.
Aquatic Center.
Aquatic Center. Thank you.
Well, I have a lot to say about that, actually. I think that we should be focusing our efforts on making the Brooks Street Pool larger. And there is room for it. And I think that this is a wonderful thing, but I think that they should not fund that project on the back of the poor who've lost recreational resources in other neighborhoods in the city. And I think it's, we have the wealthy stealing from the poor and that's got to stop.
Esther?
Thank you. We all know that this swimming pool over at Brooks, which I learned to swim there, you know, great, great place, is not the right size. And there is no, the footprint would not be able to be built there. So now that it needs a lot, a lot of work, staff, you know, came to us and said, "What do you want to do?" And one of the plans was to build a competition swimming pool over at El Corazon. And we need that. We need that for economic, as an economic development project. The pool at Brooks would not go away. We would certainly find a partner to maintain it and keep it for the nearby residents. But definitely, definitely, our youth deserve that pool. Our seniors deserve that pool. We need to think of it as a, like I said, economic development project where we can eventually make money, have competitions, you know, fill those hotels. But it's also a health issue and, you know, these are things that are very, very important when you get to be, you know, a certain age. So I'm hoping next year. How's that? Answer the question. Yep, next year. Thank you.
Susan?
Okay, I'm going to just give a short answer to the question. When do I think the pool will be built? Probably about three years from now.
So the reason we haven't moved forward on the pool is because last year, we only had four people on the council when it came to a vote. When it came to a vote, we could only get two people to say yes and two people said no. So when you have that kind of situation, that's a no vote. So that is the problem with having, again, four people on the city council. We, as a council, have, in spite of that, moved forward funding for the planning and the testing of the soil and we are doing work on it currently, but it's not what you're seeing. We also checked out building the pool. We can build the pool. It's non-issue. The city civic center is going to be paid off in about two years. Once that is paid off, we can borrow more money. And that is enough money to build the pool. It's about eighteen million dollars. The problem is that we do not have a revenue stream to pay for maintaining it and operating it. So if any of you have some great ideas, we'd be really open to hearing that because we have not been able to come up with anything except we got to build it, which is great, but we can't make it work. So I talked to Carlsbad, the mayor, and I asked him how much it costs to operate his aquatic sensor and he said, "More than they told you. They told us a million and a quarter. We have about $1.1 million a year. It's more like two and a half million." We have nowhere near that revenue stream. So I have no idea when it's going to be built.
Thank you. One of the things we're going to do, I think I'm going to ask the last question now. Okay, you'll all get two minutes each. And I'm also going to ask a question and I'm going to give you a little bit of a chance to think about it because it's something that I'd like, you'll probably want to use the whole two minutes for. Our final question. And you have two minutes to respond. We would like to know, what question do you wish we had asked you? What should we have asked you and tell us why? Esther, you're on. Yours, you. If you want to need a little more time to think about it, you can handle it.
Let's see, I wish that, because this is the chief of commerce, I wish that you had asked me, you know, do you commit to economic development in Oceanside, to bringing businesses to Oceanside and stop changing the zoning of land that is currently zoned, either industrial or commercial? And, you know, we get, of course, offers from developers to build more high-density residential and then we lose the opportunity to get jobs to Oceanside. So I think the question would be, you know, do you commit to this? Will you commit to this? And what will you do to make sure that happens? So I've been listening to staff, our economic development staff, for, you know, for the beginning of time. And they have some great ideas about, even Villastoria, the idea of having a boutique hotel right next to the mission and perhaps some housing, but really talk about income and bringing in revenue streams for the city so that we're not having to go backwards. For example, Villastoria, as we know, housing does not pay for itself. It just never pays for itself. So the low side is something like $600,000 a year that it's going to be hit to the general fund, up to a million dollars a year, and that's for the life of the project. So that is not fair to the rest of the community and it's not fair to the generations of, you know, our kids that are growing up that want to have jobs, good-paying jobs, jobs that will help them stay in Oceanside, find a home, a hopefully affordable house to live in Oceanside. So we need to partner more and stop, you know, kind of kowtowing to the developer community. In fact, what, at North River Farms, which is being, it was actually two teachers who moved forward on the SORT initiative. We need to be looking for ways of raising money and not having these hits to the general fund that'll definitely cause us to lose things like a police department, fire department. So please ask that question. Please, please, make sure we have these commitments to help the economic Oceanside.
Okay. Well, first of all, you asked a lot of really good questions. What question do I wish you had asked is, what do I think about taking Coast Highway down to two lanes? And I wished you had asked because you probably would have wanted to hear my answer, right? So I can hear it, okay? You can hear it still. So I think that it would be a safety concern to take it down to two lanes. I think that there's a lot of congestion there at this point. There is no plan to do any changes or improve Interstate 5 for at least ten more years. So we know that Coast Highway gets very congested whenever 5 is congested. I think that if we take it down to two lanes, it'll cause a lot of traffic to go into the seaside community, which will be hazardous to the children and people walking in that community through the neighborhood streets with a lot of extra traffic. I also think it could be hazardous because if we ever had to have any type of evacuation, it would give us two less lanes of traffic to evacuate and that could be very dangerous. And I think as far as needing to do it for the bicyclists, the bicyclists mostly prefer to ride along Pacific Street where they have a view of the ocean and they also have plenty of space to ride on the bike trails beside the train tracks. So I think mainly for safety reasons, we need to keep that a four-lane road. Thank you.
So I think the question you could have asked us that would have been helpful or maybe even stimulating to the sort of monologues we have going up here is what are your ideas as an elected or as a candidate for bringing more jobs and businesses into the city of Oceanside? And it's not simply a matter of saying, "Yeah, we want to give you $1,000 or $1 million to come to Oceanside." What we want to do in Oceanside to promote and stimulate business is not to look for more gen and techs. It's to look for more businesses that are startup businesses that want to come here and open in a thousand square feet or 5,000 square feet. We are not going to have 100,000-square-foot buildings to do anything in because there's no place to build them. So what we have here is the opportunity to streamline some of the processes at City Hall instead of it being, "Look, here's your sixty-page application if you want to do a cannabis business." That is what it is. And you have to pay a lot of money to find out whether or not you're going to get the permit to do the operations. So instead of it making, instead of being a block to business, we need to help take the hand of business owners who want to bring their businesses here to Oceanside. And I'm not talking about doing a big investment, like I said a couple of seconds ago. We just need to streamline. Instead of taking an application, putting it on the shelf, letting it sit for thirty days or sixty days and then thinking about it, "When's it going to come up?" We can move these things forward at a much higher rate of speed and lower the costs of people to get their businesses started. What we need are innovative businesses and that would be businesses that want to manufacture and on a small scale, manufacturing very specific products. In addition to that, we need to look at having real manufacturing, like the sign operation that we have here in Oceanside, where you manufacture solar panels or install them. They can be manufactured elsewhere and brought in. We can train people. We have labor in San Diego, the United Electrical Workers Group, that can train people how to install this equipment. It doesn't cost us anything. So we can have an educated workforce to do solar work and then we can power our homes, our businesses and our vehicles with electricity. And electric buses are coming. They've already been put into the system here to have them in North County. Thank you.
Mike?
One more time, what, basically, what do I wish you'd asked me?
Yes, exactly. This is, yes, this is your opportunity to vent.
Well, right now, we have 76,000 residents that are underserved by parks. The only city on the coast of California that has a worse record than that is Carlsbad, believe it or not. If we want to attract high-paying jobs, we have to have the amenities that they want. And beyond that, it's a public health issue. The statistics show that people who live beyond a ten-minute walk from a park have higher incidences of diabetes, cardiovascular diseases, and our current Parks Master Plan requires it. And now we're talking, we're circulating a new Parks Master Plan that wants to lower those standards to a fifteen-minute walk shed. I'm very concerned about that. I think that we have to look at parks as a human right, not as a luxury service. Recently, the city was talking about monetizing the amenities in the parks. Now, these are basic services. People have to have, we, our government has to take care of the basic quality of life issues and we need to stick to that. We need to stick to those standards for the city to lift everybody up and not just a few. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Boy, thank you all for sharing all the insight this evening. I think it was outstanding. Is Scott standing behind me? And once again, before I turn over to Scott, I want to thank everybody for all of the, I think, give yourselves a round of applause. It was really, it was really good. Thank you all. Thank you all.
All right, thank you. How about another round of applause for our moderator and all of our candidates? Thank you all for coming out. We really appreciate your passion for our community and your interest to hear what our candidates had to say. And thank you again to all of our candidates for being here and for running for office. We appreciate that. We will be holding in October a Meet the Candidates mixer. We'll be inviting all four of our District One candidates on October 9th at Beryl Republic. So we hope that many of you will come out and we hope all of you will be available that evening. Again, thank you to our hosts, the Oceanside High School Performing Arts Center. Let's have a round of applause for them. Again, thank you all for coming out this evening and have a great evening. Thank you.